The prayer will be offered by Acting Clerk Alderman O'Brien. And Alderman Clemmons will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Thank you, Madam President. Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty of managing the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with the spirit and unity of understanding which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that all and any decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help me, God.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance, please.
Alderman Kelly?
I'm here.
Alderman Dowd is here. Alderman Thibodeau?
I'm here.
You're here. And Alderman Cleese?
Here.
Alderman Jettie?
Here.
Alderman Sennett?
Here.
Alderman Clemmons?
Here.
Alderman Sullivan?
Here.
Alderman Lopez?
Here.
Alderman Gavea?
Here.
Alderman Thibodeau?
Here.
Alderman Moran? Alderman Timmons?
Here.
And Alderman O'Brien is present. You have fifteen, excuse me, fourteen in attendance.
I'm here also, Alderman O'Brien.
Oh, welcome.
Thank you. As is Alderman Dowd. Thank you. Okay. Tonight, we're going to have a public hearing. As is customary, I will turn the meeting over to the Chair of the Budget Review Committee, Alderman Dowd.
Yes, we have a public hearing on two resolutions this evening. The first one is relative to the acceptance and appropriation of $617,000 from the State and New Hampshire Department of Transportation, FTA Section 5339, funds, and $130,500 from the State and New Hampshire Department of Transportation, state fiscal year 2025 capital match funds into the transit grant activity transit capital projects. Is there anyone here that's going to explain more about this? As I assume it would be Mr. Director Sullivan, who was on Zoom with us tonight. Director Sullivan?
Thank you, Chairman Dowd. For the record, Matt Sullivan, Community Development Division Director for the City of Nashua, here on behalf of O-2494. This request is for the acceptance and supplemental appropriation of $617,000 from NHDOT 5339 for what we refer to as capital grants for the express purpose of funding the overhaul and rehabilitation of several buses within the NTS fleet. This also includes some funds that will be used to support the purchase of additional ADA paratransit buses as well for the City of Nashua. Also included within O-24, R-24, O-94, is the request for acceptance and supplemental appropriation of $130,500. Specifically, these are state fiscal year funds that are appropriated within the budget. They're not federal pass-through dollars in the traditional sense, as were the prior dollars. Specifically, these will be used to fund or actually match the funding of the purchase of additional ADA paratransit vans. As I've mentioned, certainly to this committee and to other Alderman committees in the past, the NTS fleet of paratransit vehicles that we use to provide demand response and paratransit services within the region are aging, and we're working incrementally to replace those on an ongoing basis. And this $130,000 will actually act as a piece of the city's match for FTA monies that are coming in to purchase these buses, and we plan to purchase several over the coming year. Together, again, it's $130,500 and $617,000 for acceptance and appropriation intended to match funds that we will be used to purchase these buses. Happy to answer any questions that the committee may have, and certainly will stick around for the actual meeting and consideration. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Are there any amplifying questions relative to this resolution that anyone would like to ask? Director Sullivan? Seeing none? Thank you, Director Sullivan. Now I'll be hearing public testimony, first testimony in favor of R-24094. Is anyone who wishes to speak in favor? Seeing none? Now testimony in opposition? Seeing none? Once again, testimony in favor? Seeing none? And once again, testimony in opposition? Seeing none? In that case, I will close the public hearing at 7:07 PM. And I will open the public hearing on R-24104, relative to the supplemental appropriation of $1,500,000 of assigned fund balance in the capital project activities Stella Stadium, turf field replacement, protect the field cover, and other renovations. Who from the school department wishes to come up and say a few words? Mr. Smith? Yes, Mr. Smith has some information relative to the Stella Stadium?
Mr. Smith, did you have anything for the computer to put up on the board?
No.
No?
Hard copy. One of these will be made as part of the public record.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
The Stella Stadium renovations. This is a recap. The stadium was built in 2001. We state building aid, some bond funds, large donations by Stella's and a lot of families, and a lot of other donations. In the large donations, the stadium was named Stella Stadium, and the field was named Nott Field. The original artificial turf was replaced in 2012.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
I think you could hear me before, but.
Yes.
So renovation of the facility, and specifically the turf replacement, has been included in our capital improvement request for the last couple of fiscal years. The Board of Ed requested the facility renovation this past January. Since the project was not approved in the city's FY '25 budget, the formal request was then sent by the Board of Ed to the Joint Special School Building Committee in July. Also in July, annual GMX testing is completed. And then the field condition was reassessed, and GMX testing again with a recommendation to close October 2nd, 2024, which happens to be my birthday, by the way. GMX testing, if you're not familiar with that, that's a method by which engineers come in and they measure the hardness of the field. So there's a definite threshold of about 200. What's the PSI or? Okay, 200 PSI. At that point, it's, the field is determined to be concerning. I wouldn't call it dangerous yet. And that's what we discovered in 2024. That testing's been done every single year. We found recent records at least back to 2020, 2019. Last few years, it's shown that number rising, rising. So the very last testing done in April, there were several locations on the field that were loaded above that threshold. So the main thing we're looking to do with this project is replace the artificial turf. There are some concerns by both the Park and Rec people who maintain the facility for us and by own athletic people that there may be some areas that need to be, the drainage needs to be improved, so that's part of our budget. I'm speaking now from the budget page. So we have a hard quote already for to replace the turf, $848,675. That includes some monies for under drainage, but not by my estimation enough, so I threw another $70,000 at it. Installing gates at the stands. This is where you get to the, I put the top of the stands, it's actually the top of the stairs that go to the field, to prevent people from going on the field from the stands. And originally, there were some hard gates placed in a way, and the fire department said, "That's no good. That's not good for egress." So they suggested we just install gates that are movable. Park and Rec's been using the same field groomer since the stadium was built in 2001. It's at its end of its service life and not well beyond it. Put an allowance in to replace the roofing above the press box and locker rooms. Also, I looked at the roofing a couple of weeks ago. It actually looks pretty good. I don't think that we'll be necessarily spending $100,000, but we at least need to repair seams and that sort of thing to prevent rain leaking in. Improve locking for the locker, improve flooring for the locker rooms, prevent people from slipping. There are, I believe, burning bushes around the entire facility, particularly around the perimeter, especially over in front of the visitors' area. That's the only means of stopping people, little kids, whoever, getting onto the field. So we're looking actually to install a fence there instead and take out those bushes. If you were to go there and look up above you in the concourse, you'd see a lot of peeling paint, a lot of exposed galvanized decking, looking to repaint that. The, behind the goals, particularly the goals for football, but also soccer and the other sports, there's a net that's raised to catch any wayward balls or field goals that go long. That needs to be replaced. The press box window coverings need to be replaced. I'd like to cage off the areas under the bleachers a bit better to prevent the birds from getting in and making their deposits. And then always, we have a contingency for things we don't foresee, or some of these estimates may be a little bit off. So that total's $1.5 million. The pages that follow are various photographs that show you what I've just been talking about. First one shows the press box. You can see the far right window, the, it's like an accordion door that pulls down, an overhead door, covers the windows. The one on the far right's broken. All the other ones are hard to operate. Next picture, you see, you saw on the left, a picture of the roof. On the right, it's hard to tell from that picture, but it's a picture of the concourse, and if you look up, you'll see all the peeling paint. Next page, I show pictures of all the, I think, nice burning bushes surrounding the field, but they don't provide protection for the players or for the people in the stands. Show a picture of the netting. On the next page, I show the locations of where the gates are that the fire department wants us to install. I asked Lisa Zingras, the athletic director, is with me tonight, and I asked her about the speaker there. She says that's been defunct for many, many years, since they replaced all the speakers. That can actually be taken down, but that's a minimal cost. And the last picture I have in here is the current Stella's donors plaque. You can see there a lot of people donated money back when the facility was built. So potential funding sources, 1.5 million are considering tonight. We've heard or received some documentation from the Stella's family. They want to donate $200,000. And there's also a reserve fund that was set up for Stella Stadium. That's about $84,000 currently. Lisa, does anything you want to add to all of them? Okay. And that's all I have.
Are there any amplifying questions that you might have relative to the stadium? Alderman Kelly?
Thank you. So the last page here, the Stella's funding sources, you have the 1.5 from the city, and then the potentials. If those come in, would the 1.5 come down from the city? Or do you have additional projects that you're outlining?
I can address that. The attorney for the Stella's family has the money in his escrow account. Once this is approved, Attorney Leonard is going to be putting in legislation, I'm going to be sponsoring it, to accept the 200,000. And until that goes through the process, we still need the 1.5. But she and I talked this afternoon, the legislation will have to read that it has to be used directly for the replacing of the turf. So some of the things that were mentioned earlier in the, in his presentation will become alternates, as we do with the joint special on things, and if we have the money at the end, we will replace them. If the 1.5 million is reduced by 200,000, then we just have to see what can be done. All of these things may not be done if we, because we only have whatever money is authorized by this board, and then we will proceed in that manner. If there's 1.7 million and, and we don't spend it, obviously that money goes back into the, it doesn't get spent, and it goes back in the city coffers. All set?
If I could follow up?
Follow up?
So I understand the 200,000 potentially could come back, but why wouldn't we just take the 85,000 off the top of this if there's money in that reserve that we have to use?
Well, that's the money that goes into for regular maintenance, ongoing maintenance. If we drain that, then there's no money left to do the day-to-day maintenance.
You got me. That's a good answer.
Yes, Alderman Kelly? Cleese, rather?
It's closed.
Close, same last.
Almost all the letters are there, so. I have a question to what, to what you said, and if you want me to wait to the, to the, I have no problem.
It's only brought up in budget, so.
Right, so I can wait, wait to that. So let me answer my question. If you want to wait to answer it, I'm fine with that.
All right.
So my question is, to what you said, and to what Mr. Smith said, his line items equal the 1.5 million. So the items he spoke to was 1.5 million. You just said that the $200,000 is for additional items. So again, I can wait to budget to speak to it.
We can address it more in budget, but it's not for additional items. It's 200,000 is definitely going to be used for the turf.
Right, the 200,000 would be used for the turf, but you made a comment that the items he spoke to were in addition to the 1.5 million.
No, no, no. They're, they're all included in the 1.5. The question is, as we, and the reason we have a contingency is, you know, prices change, things change.
Right.
They dig up the field, I need to do more irrigation, I mean drainage than we have to do, we need monies to cover that. So we will only spend what we need to spend, and then the rest of the money comes back to the city.
Okay, so you're just saying if the contingency goes over 144,000, then we would do that?
Mr. Zingras wants to.
Okay.
Sorry, just wanted to add the one thing that is not part of this that we are hoping eventually to get is the field covering. That when we saw quotes for that, it was about $125,000 to rent each time we needed to cover the field, or it was about $421,000 if we purchased the field coverings to protect the investment of the brand-new turf. So that's one thing that is not in the cost proposal, where additional funds could go.
And the, 400,000, or 421,000?
Yeah.
Is to buy it, but then the city has to install it and pick it up and then find a place to store it, which is one of the problems right now, where they don't need to store it. So that's sort of in the air right now. And if we have funds left, we're doing these other things, and we want to, when you rent it, you're going to have to rent it three times every year. So it'd be 300,000 a year to rent it, 421,000 to buy it. But I think that decision needs to wait until we get further along in the process, because it would require more money than currently we have.
I have commented on that, but I'll wait till budget, so thank you.
Yeah, wait till budget. Anyone else? Alderman Lopez?
Yeah, in terms of process, if in the budget committee or if in the subsequent special Alderman meeting, anyone tries to change the amount requested, does that mean we have to do another public hearing, or?
Oh, Melanie.
I don't know if that answers it, no.
Hi, Melanie.
I, I'm not sure, but I wouldn't want to risk it because I have the company sending us the contract tomorrow. It's, I just wrote it down, it's ABC Sports, RBC Sports. And it's going to be reviewed again by Corporation Council, and hopefully Thursday I'll sign it. They will be here the next day to start working on the field. If we had to have another public hearing, it'd be another 20-some-odd days and go through this whole process again, and that would delay the, the field. It might not get done this fall. So I, I don't think we're in a position where we should be changing the number at this point of the 1.5, because we haven't accepted the 200,000 yet. And, and, you know, we need to do these, these things for the stadium. We're going to start with the, with the drainage and the field and go from there. And we'll, the joint special will prioritize the other items.
Well, I just wanted to make sure I knew what the stakes were. Probably know ABC want their logo on the cover, so figure it out.
Yeah. That's a home issue. Any other amplifying questions? Seeing none? Thank you. So now, relative to the R-24104, testimony in favor? Name and address for the record?
My name is Paula Johnson. I live in Nashua. What concerns me here, and people say, "Well, I was on the board back then." Yes, I was. And it came before us, and I was just talking to Mr. Smith, 12/2021, 2022, six-year plan, and in 2023, if this field was to be fixed, which it probably should have been, it would only cost us $950,000. Now, listening to this whole thing, $200,000 Stella's family is going to give us so we can get some of this done. There's also, I was reading the capital improvement report, capital, yeah, from 12 of 24, of 2024, the field got a C minus one, C dash one rating. Okay? Gave you the whole specifics of when the field was, was built, everything about the field and what needed to be done. So it was already, 2023, we knew it had to be done. It gets a rating, like a lot of the school district deferred maintenance gets a rating at the bottom of the list, and then you want to know why. It costs so much money, but we could do the parking garage with little pieces of pebbles falling down, but you're not taking care of the schools, and when, by the time we take care of it, we have to build new schools. Come on, people, let's be smart about this already. And so I'm looking at this, there's $263,000 exists in the capital reserve fund earmarked for Stella Stadium, which could be used to defray some of the bonded costs. Is that $263,000 going to be used?
Say that, yes?
$263,000, that says in the capital improvement report, that could be used to defray some of the costs. Did you know about that $263,000? No? Does anybody from your department, Mr., I guess, well, I'm asking, I know I'm not part of this committee, but I'm just asking this because it says right here. So people need to do their homework, and I just pulled this up tonight and reading it more right now. So you've got $263,000 that could have started this project, but it wasn't. And then you're talking about whether or not you should get a cover for this. Well, it can cost you $125,000 each game, or that's what, I think we said about $375,000, cover the field to, for long-lasting. Or you could spend $421,000 to cover the field, to protect it, right? One-time investment, okay? We don't know where going to put it. Well, you know what? If we're going to put all this money into it, 1.5 million plus money from the Stella's family, plus you have $263,000, which will, the two of them will defray the costs, isn't it logical to make an investment to preserve the field so it doesn't get ruined like this again? I mean, Alderman Walsher and I go back a long time on this. I was on the Board of Education when this was being built. I was against it because I was a NIMBY, the neighborhood and everything. But, and my name is, I got a plaque there, and I was against it, but that's okay. That's okay. I've done my time in the city, yeah, fighting for things like this. But, you know, this is something that we need to outlive all of us. We can't build another field like this. We can build another school for $90 million, but to build a field like this, where are we going to put it? The kids will have no place to play because you'll have to shut it down like this again and start from scratch. So we're being penny wise and pound foolish. I don't mind spending the money on something that is supposed to be, and we should never let these things get to this point, especially when the Board of Ed was talking about this. Mr. Smith told us about it. Everybody knew about it, and it gets a C-dash-one rating, capital improvement. So this is where all the problems are coming in. We, and we're not prioritizing things in this, and we know we're not. $45 million spending cap override, basically? I mean, do we do this, or do you do the little parking garage stuff right now? This benefits the city as a whole and our students. That's the first thing. The other thing in the, what I'm concerned about is the fact that an agreement was written and a former interim superintendent signed, which many of us didn't know about, and Stella, and BG's paying us $15,000 a year for the use of the field. The question is, how much are they using the field versus us using the field? And is that amount of money covering the cost of them using the field for the wear and tear? I know we have youth programs that we don't charge on, okay? But we have to sit, go back and take a look at the wear and tear and how people are using our fields, and who's paying the appropriate amount of money? Because it can't always just be on us little old taxpayers, because there's just so much we can burden anymore, you know? So that's a big question. And the proposal, I know, Alderman Dowd, you and I talked about it prior to the meeting, that I guess a proposal is being written up, a contract to some extent, on how we're going to do this. Well, you know, I guess people say we can't go back, we have to go forward. But if we're going to go forward, we have to make sure that we don't fall back on the old practices that we have here now. We need to go forward. That's going to be beneficial to everybody in the city, and then we don't have another kerfuffle like this, Judge Judy uses that word, kerfuffle like this, that we shut down a whole stadium, and then no kids get to play. And then we've got to find other avenues. And if BG doesn't want to pay their fair share, then I guess it's time to say, "Well, guess what? You're leaving. Find another place to go." Because I don't want it to be like Conway Ice. They only pay us a buck a year for 99 years. That's on our property. There's a value to this land here. There's a value to our stadium. And the value doesn't seem to work in the benefits of our taxpayers in this city. It works to the It works for the people who are renting. So anytime you want to sell land, if you decide to sell the DPW garage, I hope you're going to look at the value, what the market value is on that. I'm sure several million, if not more, dollars that could go back into the coffers for the taxpayers. Thank you.
Anyone else testimony in favor?
Good evening. Lou Jarris, 56 Haynes in Nashua. I think it's important for us to move forward on getting the field repaired. Just listening to the report from Mr. Smith, we need to be double-assured that the drainage is upgraded properly and then maintained as well. It's probably one of the reasons why we're having issues with the turf. The previous speaker made mention of parking garages and other infrastructure that we have. Sparring concrete will eventually fail and drop on cars or tragically could drop on somebody walking through there or even while they're driving their vehicles. So we need to pay attention to that effort as well and make sure it doesn't get to that point. So I appreciate your consideration this evening, and thanks for the time.
Thank you. Anyone else in favor? Testimony in opposition? Seeing none. Once again, testimony in favor. Seeing none. Once again, testimony in opposition. Seeing none. Under that, I will close the public hearing on R-24104 at 7:31 PM. Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to make the motion that the October 28th, 2024 special meeting of the Board of Aldermen be adjourned.
The motion on the floor is to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed. Motion carries. We're adjourned at 7:32. Budget's going to start right away. Five minutes.